...long, you give session and we will do our best to catch up. I have a few announcements. Tomorrow night, the Committee on Diversity, Equal Opportunity, and Affirmative Action will hold an organizational meeting at 6:00 PM in Town Hall, Room 111. Selectman Daley, do you have anything you wish to add to that?
Well, I think I'm on the agenda to speak.
Okay, fine. You can do that later.
Save that.
Tomorrow night, also in Town Hall, in Room 103, the DPW will host a forum on town meeting to answer any questions about issues involving any DPW activities. On Thursday night at 7:00 PM, at the American Legion VFW Post at 386 Washington Street, the Historical Society will hold its annual meeting with a talk on remembering Brookline's Civil War dead, which fits nicely into the fact that we're approaching Memorial Day. And finally, in my announcements, the Kennedy Birthplace at 83 Beale Street will be celebrating John F. Kennedy's 96th birthday next weekend, May 25th-26, with open house from noon until 4:00 PM, and will be conducting neighborhood walking tours on each of those two days at 2:15 in the afternoon. Any other announcements from members of the board? Seeing none, then we will move as quickly as possible through our miscellaneous calendar. Can we agree to hold any items that people have questions? I will point out that E, F, and G are executing contracts we've already approved. So is there any item that a member would like to hold for discussion or questions?
Yes, I just have a very quick question about Item D.
Item D, okay. We'll hold D.
I just have a question about H.
H. D and H.
Oh, and I, sorry.
I knew if I hesitated. H and I.
It is $203,000.
I know, I know, I know. Okay, in that case, let's take up the...
Okay, sorry, J too.
Commissioner Peppa Sturgeon, please come forward.
How are you tonight?
We are good, thank you. So I believe all of these items are yours, starting with D, if you would care to explain.
Item D is an extra work order for the contract PW-12-20, which is the Clark Road Reconstruction. During the construction, we encountered some unsuitable base material, sub-base material on the road. As many of you are aware, we had a lot of drainage problems, surface water drainage problems on Clark Road, which is what the road reconstruction was meant to address. And part of it was most likely due to the poor sub-base material. So we had to remove all that sub-base material, replace it with new type of material, and then that required some additional asphalt patching, some new granite curb work, and some other miscellaneous items. So the extra work order for $106,348.24 represents about 18% of the total contract value, which is $590,236. That was the original bid. But I should remind you, this is a Chapter 90 project, so all this money is being paid for through NAST DOT.
Okay, other questions?
Yes.
Selectman Banker.
Actually, first of all, I hope you're feeling better.
Much, thank you.
Okay. And I'm pleased to see that you are here. I was just curious as to, and I think you've probably explained, I understood the sub, the crushed stone and so forth, but I was just wondering how it went from, for example, 116 linear feet of pavement joint cut to 4,718 linear feet? And just how, where the original number came from and how it was essentially 45 times the original number, and, you know, hot mix asphalt for patching going from 49 to 440?
Yeah, and Peter can elaborate on the details, but I think both three items are related. If we had to open up more roadway for various reasons, that would require more pavement joints and more asphalt.
Okay.
Mr. Ditto.
Yeah, the big jump is because we forgot to account for cutting the pavement immediately in front of the curb before the Batumis Patch goes in. The way the road was constructed was, the curbs were, the road was excavated, the base material was fine graded and compacted, then the binder material or the base material went on. Then, when that gets placed at the right line and grade, we come back and we set the curbs. And the contractor gets paid for straightening out that edge in front of the curb to make it nice and vertical and straight. And that is a payment item that was underestimated or wasn't accounted for for that particular item or work. So that's where the big jump came.
And was that, how is that related to the subsurface condition? What, or...
That really isn't related to the subsurface condition. It's just physically cutting the existing pavement at grade, removing it, and then compacting the material that's left over and then putting the binder on.
So we just missed it, you know? When we had 116 in the original specifications, we just...
Right. I think what happened was, the other area where we used that item is when we patched the driveways, we come by with the new curb, and then we go back maybe five, seven, eight, 10 feet with Batumis Patch, we have to cut the pavement back there. So that's where the, I think, the original number came from, and that it was increased because we forgot to account for that area in front of the curb.
Okay.
All right, other questions? Hearing none, then I move that we approve extra work order number one in the amount of $106,348.24 in connection with contract PW-12-20, Clark Road Reconstruction. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banker?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next held item is H. Commissioner.
Yes, this item is a contract award and execution for Aqua Lawn Utility in the amount of $216,538.2. This is for the pedestrian bicycle improvements. It's going to be on various streets. Most of the contract, well, about half the contract is the removal and installation of new pavement markings and that bicycle symbol that you see on the bike lanes that's...
The share-o.
These are shared lanes.
The share-o, I guess it's called, yeah.
Wait, to remove, did you say? No. Mark, mark.
Mark.
Oh.
The lanes, the existing lane markings have to be removed and then the new lane markings put down.
Okay, okay.
There is some curbing work and concrete sidewalk work, particularly at one point on Carlton Street where there's a bottleneck and the curb needs to be realigned to accommodate the bicycle lane. But some of the streets that are involved, and this is not a complete list, but Cypress Street from Chestnut to Boylston, Washington Street from School Street to the town line, Harvard Street from Longwood to the town line, Chapel Street, Carlton Street, Paugh Street, Lennox, and I believe it may be, there may be a portion of Dudley Street as well on that list. But basically, it's a pavement marking contract.
Questions? Selectman Daley?
Yeah, my question, and then somebody else on the board's going to have to refresh my memory, but wasn't there a vote at town meeting a year or two ago that, something about bicycle improvements and this board having to specifically go over them and approve them where they were? Or was that only when it was...
Transportation.
No, there was some vote of town meeting that required us to specifically look at bicycle things, and I can't remember exactly which bicycle things it was. Was it only when it was the going in the reverse direction or what was it?
No, I think there was a general condition, wasn't there, Sean? A budget condition or capital?
On the street we have, there's any changes.
So I'm just wondering if we should have, and I apologize for not bringing this up in advance, but I noticed it today, and I wondered if we should have more specific information about exactly where this is going to happen before we...
Do you want to hold it?
I think the question is, is there any change to the bicycle markings or lanes?
No, I thought it was replacement.
I think it's only a change.
No, I don't, I think this is some additions, because the Cypress one is new and was part of that town meeting vote.
If you want to hold this, would you certainly come back with...
Hold it till next week? Okay. Let's do.
I think we could use like a little map as to where it's going to be and that sort of thing, so that we can assure town meeting that we have done our job that we're supposed to do.
If I recall, two of them were particularly contentious.
Dudley is.
Dudley and then a portion of Lower Beacon.
Park Street.
Park.
Oh, Park.
Yeah. All right, we'll hold it and get some more information, and then let's move on to Item J. Aye, sorry.
Item I.
Aye.
Item I is a favorite project in the whole world. The Lower Beacon Street sewer separation project.
Yes, yes, it's not over yet.
It's not over yet, no, but it's almost over. This is change order number two, and it's for the construction of an eight-inch sewer on St. Mary's Street down at Commonwealth Avenue that was not part of the original contract. And we found that we had to go in and spend a lot more money than we had anticipated to build this sewer connection that serviced one of Boston University's buildings on the corner of Commonwealth Avenue and St. Mary's Street. The MWRA, of course, is paying for all of this. It's 100% funded by MWRA. We have to get their approval on any change orders. They have approved this particular change order for $203,200, and the work is complete. Just as a side note, on the remainder of the project, I'm happy to report that the pipeline work is 100% complete, and in fact, the pipe, the new pipelines have been fully activated and are now operating as they were designed to do. And that includes the new Brookline storm drain outlet that goes to the Charles River under the Boston University Chapel. That's operating as designed. We haven't had any big storms yet to test it, but I know that at some point we will. All the underground pipeline work is done. We are now working on the restoration, as I promised you we would be in May and June. We're proceeding with the surface restoration, the curb and sidewalk replacement work, and we'll finally complete it with the milling and final pavement of the roadway, which will be curb to curb.
Fantastic. Any other questions? Yes, Selectman Daley?
Yes, my question with this restoration work, is that mostly on the sidewalks, or is the road again going to be closed down?
The road will be closed from time to time, it's certain lanes, not completely. The original trenches that were done, particularly in the St. Mary's to Carlton Street area, we had to go back and actually remove the temporary material and put in permanent base material in the roadway.
Commissioner, I just have to say that I bet it's hard for you to get served at any of those restaurants down there.
Actually, they all love me down there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And they'll be thanking me when the next 100-year storm comes around. But we will be at some point milling and overlaying the entire road service, and there'll be times when the roads will be closed for short periods of time, but I think in the end it'll all be worth it.
I don't, is the, just be aware of like the BU graduation and things like that.
Yeah, we work around that. We work around the marathon, all those types of events.
Okay. Commissioner, I noticed that in the document we received, there is a slight numeric discrepancy. I want to make sure we vote the correct amount. In your letter to us, it says 203,200, but in my calendar, it says 203,000. Should it be 203,200?
Yes, I apologize for that.
Okay, that's okay. We'll do 203,200. All right, I move that we approve extra work order number two in the amount of 203,200,000 for work to be performed in connection with contract number PW-11-13, Lower Beacon Sewer Separation Phase Two. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banker?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, and was there another?
Yes, Single Tree Tank.
Yeah, Single Tree, J. Do not go away yet, Mr. Peppa Sturgeon.
Okay. I didn't realize that one was flagged.
Which my question is, it seems like we're constantly reconstructing this tank.
This is the road to it.
Oh, this is the road to the tank. So the tank itself is okay now.
Right now it is. But I promise you, we will be reconstructing it again.
You know, every time I hear those ads for the ceramic paint that lasts forever, I think of the Single Tree Tank. Isn't there something you can do?
We use a, we've used different paints over the years. We've used coronated rubber. There's not a lot of paints that you can use because the inside of the tanker, of course, is in proximity to drinking water. So, you know, you want to have the right stuff on the inside of that tank. That tank was built in 1938 by the Chicago Bridge and Iron Company, and it's one of our greatest assets in our water system, and we have to keep it up. I keep to a very rigid rehabilitation schedule on that tank.
I know it's your favorite project.
And it must be kept, because I don't take drinking water quality lightly, as you know.
And we adhere to that.
Yes, you do.
We totally agree. Okay, question?
Very quick question. Melissa, this actually is from Melissa Goff. This is one site for solar panels. I assume, that assumes that the driveway is where it is now, and we're not going to be wasting this money in resurfacing.
Well, it would be upon the solar developer to assess the site in terms of what else would be required in order for them to put the panels up there. So it would be part of the, what they're looking at on the site.
So this will be, I just, this will be done in conjunction with that project. I mean, there's going to be some interface between this work and the possibility of solar panels.
Depending on how quickly we can come to an agreement with the solar developer. I'm sure they're going to want to do a site visit, and DPW would be involved in that, as they were when we originally looked at this plot of land for the zoning change.
Okay.
I can assure you that if and when solar panels do get installed up there, the areas for where they will be installed are already been designated, and none of them are within the area of the access road.
Okay, fine.
I'll add that that driveway is in really rough shape.
Yes, I happen to have been up there recently, and I am in favor of this paving project.
Good, okay.
Okay, then I move that we approve award, contract number PW-13-26, Single Tree Tank Driveway Reconstruction in the amount of $40,253.48. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banker?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now, I am going to move, without reading Items A, which I will actually...
I gave Kate some...
Approval of minutes as amended, okay? Any other amended, I believe?
I had...
Selectman Waschinsky, okay?
And I am passing some on.
Okay, all right, so I move, I will take a separate vote. I move that we approve the minutes of May 7th as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banker?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then I'm going to move Items B, C, E, F, G, and G. In the language printed in the calendar for the amounts so stated, all in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banker?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And now we are at Item K, which is prompted by the fact that we had quite a few recent individuals wishing to make public comment, and there were some questions that got raised actually by the, our administrative assistants in scheduling the various people who wanted to comment. So you have before you the original guidelines, so to speak, that were, it's part of what was recorded in the minutes in May 2007, and a suggestion about what we might want to adopt that would address, in one case, we've always said that Selectman will not comment or respond, but we allowed a clarification, and it seems important for us to make that exemption or exception, that people, if there's an error of fact, that the Selectman should be allowed to comment on that. So I've added that. Basically, it's sort of a summary, and if you look in your blue calendar on the, let's see, what page is it? It's on page two in the very tiny print. That's what we've been using. So that's the original, sorry, you've got the original, which is not identical to what's on the blue calendar, and you've got a proposal for sort of making it a little bit clearer. And this was really prompted by the issue of question of clarification. Yes, Selectman Daley?
The one thing I wasn't clear about, there's a change of each speaker may comment once every four meetings on a different topic.
That's, if we wish to do it or not. I put it down there only because I thought that if we got the same thing every time and it was repetitious, I don't know. I don't have any strong feeling about it.
Okay, no, I'm okay. I just didn't understand.
Well, the four meetings comes from the 2007, which we hadn't really sort of adopted. And as I say, this is for Selectman's at-your-pleasure. It was just trying to make it clear. The one purpose I had was to specifically state that we could have clarifications if we wanted to.
Okay.
Any thoughts? We don't have to vote it tonight if you don't want to, and I don't feel the need to spend a lot of time on it. If you want to hold it, we'll bring it back next time, and if you have any wordsmithing, that's okay too.
I personally don't have any wordsmithing.
Yeah, I'm willing to vote it.
And I, you know, and I think that obviously there is some flexibility, you know, the each speaker may comment once every four meetings on a different topic. You know, if some issue arises that is unexpected, I'm sure that the board...
I think we would make an exemption. I think we would use our discretion. The idea was not to have one person come every meeting with the same subject over and over and over again.
And they are guidelines.
It's just guidelines. It's meant to provide guidance to us, but also to people who want to make public comment.
Do, when folks sign up, do we ask what they're going to talk about?
Patty Parks will ask what the topic is, so we don't always know in advance, but sometimes she'll tell us. We really don't have any opinion about it in general. Okay, well, do we want to accept this amended version?
I'll vote it.
All right. Selectman Goldstein's moving approval of proposed public comment guidelines. Second, anybody?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banker?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And now we will move to the main calendar, where we have a couple of items, beginning with the Brookline Community Foundation. Sorry about the delay.
Good evening, everyone.
Something we all wish we could do.
Welcome, Neil, to the Board of Selectmen. I'm Paul Sainer, and I'm speaking on behalf of the other 22 trustees of the Brookline Community Foundation. And this is a sneak preview of the first-ever Understanding Brookline Report, prepared by BCF, that a number of you are going to be hearing about in detail tomorrow evening at our big launch. We have oversubscribed the Understanding Brookline launch, which will be held at the Senior Center. So I'm just going to give you a very brief flavor for sort of the goals of this report and how we went about it. I'm going to refrain from attempting to summarize our findings, which are considerable in the interest of time. The genesis of this goes back almost two years, when Mel Kleckner and I and others in this room heard about the 2010 census data that was about to be released. That presented an opportunity for BCF. One of the things that a vibrant community foundation should be doing is looking at emerging trends in a community, not just sort of assuming we know what the community is all about, but doing rigorous research. So we combined both quantitative and qualitative research. The quantitative was the census and other statistical data. We hired my friend Linda Pelkey, well-known to a number of you, an urban planner and researcher and very involved in many aspects of Brookline, to dig deep into the census data. Ashley Mason of our board led a series of trustees through, on the qualitative side, more than 30 interviews with community leaders, trying to get our pulse on the community. And this report is a combination of those findings. We're very proud of it. And again, in the interest of time, I won't try to summarize it, but I look forward to seeing many of you tomorrow night when we formally launch Understanding Brookline. Thank you very much.
And I'll just add as a footnote, the BSpace Committee that's studying school enrollment and facilities needs has had the benefit of some of the early data from Understanding Brookline and very much appreciate it.
You're entirely welcome. Thank you.
Selectman Daley?
I just want to add that I am very happy you've published this book, because I did sign up. This may be welcome news to you, since you're oversubscribed. I've now got a committee meeting and cannot actually attend tomorrow.
We would have accommodated you, Selectman Daley, one way or the other.
But I am going to read this eagerly and perhaps get in touch with you if I have more questions later.
Great, I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See most of you tomorrow night.
Okay, our next item is update on Memorial Day and town celebrations. Mr. McGrody and Ms. Paradise?
Do you want me to introduce?
Yes. Selectman Goldstein, you are our authority on this.
Thank you.
Also on bicycling.
Yeah, Amanda's a girl. Amanda's definitely, yes.
You'll remember from our earlier discussions that this year, the town will not be having its usual Flag Day commemoration. Flag Day originally became a focus for town celebration when the, our annual Memorial Day celebration or commemoration became less prominent, and Flag Day was used as a substitute for an enhanced Memorial Day. In light of the fact that we now have Brookline Day in September, and that it was a huge success, the decision was made to re-apportion those assets and to re-enhance our Memorial Day festivities, and to also take some of the great celebratory things that we were doing on Memorial Day and, excuse me, on Flag Day, and making Brookline Day even grander. So I'm pleased to report that Mr. McGrody has some things to talk to us about Memorial Day this year, some enhancements to it, and that Lisa Paradise is here as well to talk about Brookline Day and some of the even greater things we can expect this coming September. So Bill, why don't you, why don't you begin?
Good evening, everyone, and we're very excited about Memorial Day. I don't know if it ever was less prominent, but it's going to be more prominent this year than ever before. We're going to start early, at 8:00. We're going to do the, we're going to visit and pay honor to our veterans at the cemeteries, starting at Walnut.
And can I say, as having accompanied you on those visits, they are truly moving Memorial Day events. More people should know about them.
That's right, thank you. We start early, and you're welcome to come to the Veterans Post in the corner of Washington Cypress Street and have a cup of coffee and a donut before we start. We'll get you on a nice bus, take you for a ride. The Police Department gives my veterans the honors accorded to the President of the United States, and I'll tell you what, especially for my World War II veterans, they deserve it, and they get it, and it's really great. We start off at the Grand Army of the Republic Monument at the Walnut Hill Cemetery, because Memorial Day began with our Civil War veterans, and we begin it with our Civil War veterans. It's a very moving ceremony. Reverend David Johnson is an amazing man who, if you listen to him speak, you believe that he was there when he was talking. Arthur Hurley is our World War II veteran, who is a Silver Star recipient, and as far as I'm concerned, a treasure for the town, and he presents the monument. And Amanda Kavanaugh is one of the most gifted violinists I've ever heard, and she does period pieces, and it's amazing. And I actually believe that my veterans that are at rest are smiling when they hear her play. I really do. We go down the hill from the monument... We go down the hill from the monument, and we honor our other veterans in a brief ceremony. We fire a volley to honor them, then our veteran, then we all get on a bus, and we go to the Revolutionary War Cemetery on Walnut Street, where the Daughters of the American Revolution conduct a ceremony honoring our founding fathers, including two slaves that fought at the first day of the revolution for freedom that they didn't even have themselves. Amazing. We're going to return to the Veterans' Post, give everyone a very quick break, and then we're going to do something that hasn't been done in 21 years. The veterans of Brookline are going to march to their memorial celebration at the war monument in front of Town Hall. The police are going to lead the procession. The Boston L.A.R.M. Fife and Drum, which is the Morland family and their associates, are going to provide the cadence for us. We had a band set up, but the evil city of Cambridge stole our band.
Ooh.
They did. We had them set up, and they moved it, and the band had to cancel out at the last minute. Our Veterans Honor Guard will march, and they're very excited about that. We're also going to have a trolley so that our veterans that can't march can still participate in the procession. And that gives us an extra bonus because that's going to actually be a rolling bandstand so that the veterans that are more vulnerable to the weather don't have to stand out during the ceremony. They can sit and enjoy the ceremony from inside the trolley.
There will, of course, be beautiful weather.
I'm holding to that. I'm absolutely holding to that. And then we're going to have the General Gavin Post. The World War II reenactors march with us. And again, our World War II Silver Star recipient, Arthur Hurley, will be in a World War II vehicle, traveling with them. And Brighton High School ROTC will follow up. We'll do our ceremony at the war memorial. A couple of things. One young man that graduated Brookline High and went into the service past while serving at Fort Drum, New York, we're going to recognize his passing, which is a terrible tragedy. It wasn't service-related, but it was a terrible tragedy. We're also going to have our guest speaker, who's a Brookline resident. His name is Lieutenant Colonel Scott Williams. He is living here, and he's retired here now, but he was an Apache helicopter pilot in both wars. He's a decorated war veteran, and he was the, his last assignment was the Professor of Military Science at BU. Before he retired, we have several people from the board up here up, going to be, then Selectman Banka will be giving the town greeting. And Representative Schmizer will not be able to make it this year because he just had the birth of a grand child, girl, boy, I don't remember off the top of my head. But our town administrator will be doing the proclamation for him this year. It'll be a nice celebration, followed by a collation. The chance for the veterans to march is really important to us. Last year, they walked from the post down. It was the first time they did that. This year will actually be a real procession. So, I thank you very much for that opportunity.
Wow. Well...
I'll just add that it's that march that was, that was what was deferred 21 years ago to Flag Day, and that's what's being restored back to Memorial Day, and I think appropriately so.
So, questions or comments?
No, I just want to say what a nice job Mr. McGroarty does putting this together every year.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure.
And I always enjoy coming, and I think that many people do.
Enjoy having you and your daughter again. It's an unbelievable violinist. Thank you.
My daughter is Amanda Kavanaugh, the fiddler. So, yes.
Right. I think it's a very nice transition from Flag Day, and I do believe that having procession, especially with the veterans involved, will, I think, enhance the event. And it picks up some of the activities of Flag Day, although I gather Brookline Day will really take on the more family-oriented aspects of Flag Day. Is that right?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Well, Ms. Paradise, why don't you segue into the next phase of what used to be, what was Flag Day?
Yeah. Great. So, let me just first say it's been a pleasure to work with Bill and his team on incorporating and making this transition as smooth as possible, incorporating most of these wonderful Flag Day elements into both the Memorial Day and to Brookline Day. I think it's been a great team. And Bill, you're right, he does an amazing job with what he does.
Right.
And I think it pleases all of us that we're not missing out on any of the elements that were so important to the town traditionally in the Flag Day celebration, that we're able to keep all of those things that were so important in both of these celebrations and commemorations. So, that being said, we are incorporating a couple of the bigger elements into Brookline Day this year, which will, most notably, will be the Flag Day 5K and one-mile fun run in the morning before the actual Brookline Day celebration begins. And that will be a 5K that will start and end in front of Lars Anderson Park on Goddard Street. It is a challenging run this year, much more challenging than it was on Harvard in the past.
Well, we should explain to Selectman Washinsky that there's an opportunity to have the dog, which is right behind you there, sit in front of you for the year if you should...
All he needs to do is complete.
Well, you have to win relative, you have to beat the other selectmen.
Yes.
And the way you do that is by participating.
Right.
Technically, that dog belongs right here at the moment, as a matter of fact.
Right. Ken got that honor last year.
Right. Right.
Get that where it belongs.
Come here, boy.
Which way do you want it?
I think this way is right.
West about 100 yards.
So, in addition to the road races this year and having those included in Brookline Day, we will also be expanding the entertainment piece, the food vendor piece. We were going to be doing this anyway, but the, but this is even more important, obviously, without Flag Day this year. And then the other big piece, I think notably, is that we will be having an area for smaller children. I think Betsy and I spoke about that a little bit through Mel.
Great.
So, we will be having an area that's dedicated to families and smaller children, too, as well as the artists, face painters, and the addition of a family-style band that will take place during that day. So, we're very excited about it. I think hopefully it'll be everything that everybody wants and traditionally expects out of a celebration like this.
Okay. Questions from Ms. Paradise? No? Well, then, I will just simply say that I think out of this decision, we may have a more memorable Memorial Day and an enhanced Brookline Day. And I'm very pleased to hear about the activities for small children. I do think last year's Brookline Day, some folks felt that it was a little more teenager-oriented, and little kids felt intimidated. So, that sounds like a wonderful addition to it. We look forward to it.
We will definitely address that this year. Thank you.
Okay. Super. Okay. Now, we have a little bit of business which we should pursue.
Thank you, Bill and Lisa. Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you both. In order to hold these two events, we have a vote, which I think is printed in your calendar, too. And I will move that we amend the BAA trust funds to, one, transfer $7,200 to the Arts Council Matching Grants Account. To, number two, to rescind the annually authorized transfer of $20,000 to the Celebrations Account. Three, to amend the board's vote of December 18th, 2012, and authorize the use of $35,000 of the BAA funds for the annual Brookline Day event.
Can I just amend that?
Oh, more.
In the memo that you have in your packet, it should be effective FY '14?
To be effective, four...
The third vote should be effective FY '14 to authorize the use of the funds in the amount of $35,000, et cetera.
Okay. Which, all right. So, the part three of the proposed vote should end to be effective in FY '14. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Everybody in agreement? All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
And the dog? Votes aye.
Thank you.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay.
I thought you were referring to me, isn't you?
No, 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 no. It was the participant, the runner. Okay. And now, Commissioner Peppa Sturgeon, come back and tell us about National Public Works Week with lots of more fun for all the family.
Thank you very much. First, I was, I'd like to welcome Selectman Washinsky. I'm looking forward to working with you going forward. You were always a friend of Public Works on the Advisory Committee. We thank you for that.
Thank you.
He's still working out what his hat, what hat he's wearing.
Correct. I would also like to thank the chairwoman for mentioning our DPW Foreman Forum tomorrow night in Room 103 at 7:00 o'clock. It's an event we look forward to every year. We make all the managers in Public Works sit up there with targets on them and take shots from everybody. But the gist is to get everybody to bring their concerns relative to Public Works operations. It's, you know, it's no holds barred. Bring your questions, bring your concerns, bring your praise, bring whatever you want to bring, and we will be happy to accommodate you and answer all of those questions before time.
And I will add that DPW probably close, gets closer to people's personal lives than any other activities in the town. So, I agree that your, I hope that your staff representatives are not just wearing targets, but maybe bulletproof vests.
Which brings me to the proclamation. Thanks for the segue. This year, as I do every year, we come before you and ask you to proclaim the third week in May is National Public Works Week. This is a national event sponsored by the American Public Works Association, of which we are a fully accredited agency, as you know, in our fourth year of accreditation already. But the annual, this annual observance takes place and is designed to educate communities and their leaders on the importance of our nation's public infrastructure and the services that Public Works provides. It also serves as a time to recognize the contributions of Public Works professionals, who, as you say, involved in just about every facet of everyone's life in the town, from building, operating, and maintaining our transportation systems, providing portable drinking water, carrying away all your wastewater, particularly on Lower Beacon Street, operating our refuse disposal systems and collecting everybody's rubbish, and encouraging recycling, dealing with our beautiful parks and open spaces in town, which, as you can see at this time of the year, look beautiful.
Absolutely spectacular, I have to say.
Absolutely spectacular. And we also provide for the protection of our environment as part of Public Works. But the point I want to make is that demands of our changing world would require that these employees be available as first responders in today's age in the event of any type of an emergency. And more often than not, Public Works employees are pushed to the back burner when you think about first responders. But I should remind folks that they, too, are first responders, and not just in weather events and snowstorms, but in all types of events, as we have seen this past month in April. We do believe that it's important for the community to honor those who devote their lives to its service. And as their leader, I'm very proud of the employees of the Public Works Department, all of them, the services they provide every single day in this town with very little fanfare at sometimes very difficult conditions. So, we ask your permission to proclaim, we ask for your proclamation for this. It's actually May 19th to the 25th this year, and we look for your support.
Okay. Well, I'm certainly delighted to support this proclamation because I believe, in spite of my comment about bulletproof vests, that Brookline's DPW does an extraordinary job in every way and probably provides a larger variety of services than any other department in the town. And you're definitely out there visible all the time, and we very, very much appreciate it. So, having said that, are there comments from members? Yes?
Yeah. I just want to mention, I'm so glad you're having DPW Day again.
That was my next comment.
Because I think the kids love it.
Yes.
And I enjoy coming, too.
May 21st, a week from today, Municipal Service Center, from noon time to 6:00 o'clock. We invite everybody to come on up, bring the kids. We'll have all kinds of trucks and black hoes for them to climb all over and blow the horns and disrupt everybody. But it's a really good day. The kids really enjoy it. We do have the third graders coming up earlier in the day to participate. But I got to tell you that we've been doing this for a long time now, every year, and it's an event that my employees really look forward to, you know, out there interfacing with not just the kids, but with the adults, too, and showing them all the things that they do, and they're very proud that they do it. So, we invite everyone to come on up and tour the Municipal Service Center a week from today, 12:00 noon to 6:00 o'clock, and particularly bring the kids.
Well, and I think actually that's one of the most exciting things for kids to do. I mean, imagine being able to sit up there on the seat where you can sort of push the controls and run those things that they have toy versions of. Okay. Selectman Banka?
Yeah. There may have been a bit of a misrepresentation there because last year, at least, the horns were disconnected. And I was very disappointed.
Well, we had to disconnect them after the morning sessions because the neighbors were getting a little irritated.
It's the third graders. Okay. Any other comment? Would you like to read the proclamation or would you like us to?
Whatever's your pleasure, ma'am.
Sir?
Whatever's your pleasure.
I'll be glad to do it. Whereas, public works, infrastructure, facilities, park and open spaces, and services are of vital importance to the health, safety, and well-being of the residents of Brookline. And whereas, it has been demonstrated that Public Works provides critical response capabilities, experience, and support to all levels of government and town agencies in times of natural and man-made disasters. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders of this community to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in the public works, needs, and programs, and employees. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Brookline, do hereby designate the week May 20th through 26th.
I'm sorry, a little date change.
Oh.
There's a tie made.
It's wrong?
It should be May 19th to the 25th, 2013. Sorry for that.
All right. May 19, sorry about that. May 19 to 23?
25.
25, 2013. I figured that part out. I didn't get the rest of it, though. As National Public Works Week, urge all of our people to join with representatives of governmental agencies in the American Public Works Association in activities and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work employees and to recognize the substantial contributions of health and welfare they provide daily on a local and national level. And I would say one of the best ways to do that is to go to the open house on Tuesday, May 21st, 2013. So, thank you very much, Commissioner. And I think you have another item before us?
I do.
We want to vote that. We should, I guess we should vote the proclamation.
All right. Okay. I move that we adopt a proclamation proclaim, proclaiming the week of May 19 through 25th, 2013, as National Public Works Week. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And now you have a personnel matter or two?
The last item, I promise you, on the agenda tonight from Public Works, it's with a heavy heart that I come before you tonight to fill this vacancy for Operations Manager in our Parks and Open Space Division. I don't know how many of you have had the pleasure of interfacing with Andy Bressi, who's our Operations Manager in Parks. He has announced his retirement at the end of June, and we wish him well in his retirement. But at the same token, he's got some big shoes to fill going forward. It's a very important job. Years ago, the department restructured our organizational chart and created these operations managers in each division. Every one of the divisions has an operations manager in an attempt to make the work more efficient and the chain of command more efficient. And I have to tell you, it's one of the biggest successes that I've seen as an administrator in Public Works in my years here. These jobs are very important, and consequently, they're very hard to fill because you really need to have the right person in these jobs. They require interfacing with the public. They need the right demeanor to answer complaints from folks. You know, you know that most of the time when folks call us, they're irritated about something. They generally don't call to tell us we're doing a good job. They call us, you know, they're having a problem. So, you really need to listen to folks and find out what the issue is and to solve it. And these operations managers... And these operations managers that we have in each division, that's their job, to make sure that the public is taken care of. So we have already advertised this position because it needs to be filled seamlessly going forward.
And when will it become vacant officially?
Andy, his last day is June 30th.
Ouch, it's close.
And we're hoping to, we've already conducted interviews for this position, and we're hoping to offer a position to a finalist sometime in the next week or two, with the goal of bringing somebody on board to work simultaneously with Andy before he leaves for a few weeks to gain as much knowledge as they can. So we request that you authorize the filling of this position moving forward so that we can get on with it.
Any further questions for the Commissioner?
Quick question.
Yep?
Andy, can you tell us where and how the position's been advertised?
These positions go through a very rigorous process. It was, I'm not sure exactly in this one, generally they're advertised in all the trade journals, they're advertised in the local papers, they're, of course, advertised on our website and on HR's website as well. We try to get folks that are in the business, because these are not entry-level positions, as you can imagine, trade journals, things of that nature. Once, I will tell you that we got over 80 applicants for this position when we advertised it, and that tells us when you get that many that you did a good job getting the word out there. Of the 80 applicants, we generally shortlist down to 10 or 12, and then of the 10 or 12, we re-interview and screen further until we get down to two or three. So it's a very rigorous process to fill it.
Approximately how many were existing town employees?
We had two internal candidates for the position that had applied.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to move this. All in favor of authorizing the filling of the following vacancy, Operations Manager in the Public Works Department, Parks and Open Space Operation Manager, T9. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Banka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I guess Ms. Parides is coming for another vacancy.
Thank you. I'm here to request authorization to hire an Assistant Aquatic Director. That position is being vacated by Kevin Bailey, it's actually already been vacated by Kevin Bailey, who took a position at MIT to further his career. He's doing well, I just saw him last week and we had a nice chat. So he's doing well. This position, obviously, is very integral to the management of the facility, the Aquatic Center, and the supervision of the whole host of part-time and full-time employees that we have at the center.
Okay, questions for Ms. Parides?
I'm going to ask the same question that I asked Andy. Can you tell us about how you advertise and what kind of responses you've had already?
We have not advertised yet.
Okay.
But we will, and like Andy, we will seek what we consider are trade journals, which is Mass Reckon Park Association, National Reckon Park Association, and all of the local papers as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then, any other questions? Hearing none. I move that we authorize filling a vacancy in the position of Assistant Aquatic Director, GN7, in the Recreation Department. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Banka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Chief? We have a vacancy in the Police Department.
Yes.
Actually, Administration.
Yes. This goes along with the study that we came in, we talked about doing several months ago of our civilian staff, and based on that study, we combined the civilian staff of Traffic and the Public Safety Business Office into one office, and we had the opportunity to promote a supervisor, which we did. So this vacancy that I'm here to ask to fill is actually filling the position that the supervisor came out of. So it is basically a Senior Audit Clerk, a C5, and our civilian staff in the Traffic Division.
Okay, questions for the Chief? I think we've pretty much heard about this already. Selectmen Goldstein, do you have your same question?
Yes, please. Can you tell us about how this one's advertised, please, Chief?
Yes, we'll be working with the HR Department. We'll be advertising it on some of the publications, on Craigslist, and it'll be on the Police Department of Town's website.
Thank you.
Okay. Then I move that we authorize filling the vacancy in the position of Senior Account Audit Clerk, C5, in the Police Department, Public Safety Business Office. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Banka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we are now moving to a public hearing on whether or not the All Kinds Alcoholic Beverages License as a Common Victular held by Sichuan Garden Incorporated, doing business as Sichuan Garden, at 295 Washington Street, should be modified, suspended, revoked, conditions added to, or canceled for violation of Mass General Laws and Town Liquor Rules and Regulations. Ms. Correa?
Yes, Chairman DeWitt, this is a hearing on a liquor violation by Sichuan Gardens that occurred on November 13th, 2012, at approximately 4:00 in the afternoon, in connection with a sting being conducted by the Police Department. The notice of hearing is Exhibit 1 to this proceeding, and that has attached to it the police report that details what happened that day. I understand that Sichuan Garden has stipulated to the facts contained in the police report, and perhaps counsel for Sichuan Garden can come up and just state that on the record.
And is there someone representing Sichuan Garden? If you would come forward, just please identify yourself for the record.
Good evening. My name is Waichia. I represent Sichuan Garden. And yes, after we, my client was served with this, which is Exhibit 1, the letter and the police report, and we, I talked to the management of the restaurant and verified the facts, and yes, we agree we're going to stipulate the facts as stated in the police report.
Very well. Town Council, is there a recommendation from the Chief?
Yes, Chief O'Leary.
Yes, it is an agreed-upon recommendation of three days suspension of their license withheld for one year.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
They have not previously failed a sting. One of the chart, one of the licensing violations was that persons were not tips trained. They have been tips trained, it's been confirmed by our liquor officer, and there is an application in, to our liquor officer in the Board of Selectmen's office for a alternate manager. Investigation will be taking place into that.
Therefore, we will move that the liquor license of Sichuan Garden, doing business as Sichuan Garden, 295 Washington Street, shall be suspended for a period of, I'm sorry, Chief, three days?
Yes, three days.
Three days to be served in succession, or?
With held.
Sorry, three days?
Held for one year.
To be held for one year, but not to be served in that space of time, okay?
That's correct.
And three, beginning on May 14th through one year from that, May 14th, 2014?
Yes.
Okay. Is that clear to everybody, Selectmen Daly?
Just to be clear about the terms, so that would be withheld for one year pending no further violations.
No further violations, right.
And if there are violations, then those three days would be served in addition to any additional penalty the Board voted for the additional violation.
Right, if there are additional violations within that one-year period.
Within that one-year period.
Selectmen Daly?
I have a question for counsel for Sichuan Garden. So as you just heard, the penalties kind of go up exponentially if there's another one, another violation within the year.
Yeah, that's the understanding of the restaurant, and they have a...
And the second thing is, I know they've gotten that particular server tips trained now.
Yes, already.
But do they understand that they have to get everyone trained?
Yes, as a matter of fact, they have adopted a liquor server policy, and they're going to have the record for each and every liquor servers regarding the training, and keep a good record for that, or the staff of the restaurant.
Okay, great. All right, then I'm going to try to restate the vote. The motion is that the liquor license for Sichuan Garden, doing business as Sichuan Garden, at 295 Washington Street, in the matter of a first violation, shall be suspended for three days. However, the suspension will be held for 12 months until May 14th, 2014, on the condition that there are no additional violations. And after that date, the suspended days shall be dismissed if there are no further violations. Is that clear? Everybody on the board with the vote?
Yes.
Okay, so moved. All in favor, please say aye.
Do you need to call for a public comment? It's a public hearing.
This is true, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this sanction? Seeing and hearing none, thank you, Selectmen Goldstein. I call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Banka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, sir, and may we not see you again. All right, we are now moving to a second public rehearing on the question of whether or not the All Kinds Retail Package Store Liquor Beverage License held by Bay State Food Shops, Marcello Rulo Manager, at 1418 Beacon Street, should be modified, suspended, revoked, conditions added, or canceled for violation of Mass General Laws and Town Liquor Rules and Regulations. Ms. Correa? I have a statement which, would you like me to make at this time?
I would, thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 64 and 67, to determine whether the Board of Selectmen, as the licensing authority for the Town of Brookline, should modify, suspend, revoke, add conditions to, or cancel, the retail package store liquor license of Bay State Food Shops Incorporated, and/or set any conditions precedent to any modification, reinstatement, or renewal of any such license based upon the complaint of Chief Daniel O'Leary of the Brookline Police Department as the enforcing agency for the Board of Selectmen, that the Bay State has violated or permitted to be violated the conditions of its liquor license and the law as follows. On October 27th, 2011, permitting an illegality on the licensed premises in violation of 204 CMR 2.05-2 to wit, the sale or delivery of alcoholic beverages to a person under 21 years of age in violation of General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 34, and Sections 8.22 and 8.23 of the Town of Brookline's Sale of Alcoholic Beverages Regulations. The Board first held a hearing on this charge on January 17th, 2012, at which time it voted to find the licensee responsible and to suspend its license for 15 days, with five days withheld for one year pending no further violations. The licensee appealed the Board's finding and sanctions to the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission. The ABCC held a de novo hearing on May 23rd, 2012. On November 21st, the ABCC issued a decision disapproving of the Board's action, which the members of the Board have received. The ABCC remanded the matter to the Board with the recommendation that no modification, suspension, revocation, or cancellation of the license be ordered by the Board. Pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 67, and applicable case law, the Board now holds this rehearing again to again consider whether or not to find the licensee responsible for the charge, and if so, what sanction to impose in light of the ABCC's findings made on the evidence presented at the ABCC May 23rd, 2012, de novo hearing. Notice of this hearing dated April 12th, 2013, was mailed to Bay State and served on Bay State's attorney, and sets out the charge in detail. That notice is marked as Exhibit 1 and is incorporated by reference into the minutes of this hearing. This hearing is being recorded by the Recording Secretary. And first, I'll ask who will represent the Brookline Police Department?
I will, Chairman DeWitt. I'm Patricia Correa, Associate Town Counsel. And just for the record, the notice of hearing is marked Exhibit A, not Exhibit 1.
Oh, sorry.
My mistake, thank you.
And who is here to represent Bay State?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. For the record, my name's Robert Allen, I have a lot practice, 300 Washington Street, here in Brookline Village.
Thank you. And sir, are you satisfied with the notice?
Yes.
Received? Okay. Ms. Correa, you have the microphone.
Okay. Just to reiterate, the record in this case consists of all the exhibits from the ABCC proceeding on May 23rd, which are numbered 1 through 27. And in addition, the exhibits consist of the notice of hearing, Exhibit A, all the pleadings submitted to the ABCC, and in addition, minutes from the Board's meetings in 2006 and 2010 regarding prior Bay State violations under prior ownership at the same management, and those are all marched with letters as exhibit numbers.
May I just interject with a question? There was some testimony that was given before the ABCC that was not given to us. I mean, just, it was filled, nothing really inconsistent, but it was filled in a little bit.
No, that's part of the record. That is, that's one of the exhibits, and it is one of the lettered exhibits, and that is, the transcript is Exhibit F.
It's the ABCC hearing.
So it's, you're considering the transcript from the ABCC?
To reflect the testimony.
Fine.
And that testimony is part of the record.
Fine.
Okay. Do you have anything?
And the exhibits are stipulated and agreed to.
Good.
And I don't know if Mr. Allen has any additional exhibits.
Yeah, Mr. Allen, is there any additional exhibit you'd like to offer?
No, I think Ms. Correa and I agreed to all the exhibits ahead of time.
Okay, very good.
There was one late exhibit, but I think it was included in, which was the transfer of ownership from the original corporation, when the change of officers, but I think that's in their exhibit, I don't know what.
Well, that was part of the ABCC.
Okay, yeah, so it's in the...
I believe it's in our exhibit records. Okay, are there any preliminary motions?
The Police Chief has none.
Therefore, are there any witnesses who will be appearing before us?
So the Board knows we have the same witnesses available to the Board. If the Board has any questions for them, we have Timothy Paquette here tonight, and we have June Murphy here tonight. And I will present based on the record. I don't intend to call them, but they are available to the Board if the Board has any questions.
Okay.
And Mr. Allen? I know you may want to swear the witnesses.
Do you have any witnesses?
No, I think the goal of stipulating was to avoid doing it for the third time.
Sure, okay, fine, just want to be clear.
That really was the substance of my question.
Okay. All right, so we have them available, and should we wish to call them, we'll swear them in.
Okay. So just to review the record evidence in support of the Police Chief's charge of a liquor violation on October 27th, 2011, in connection with a sting. Mr. Paquette met with Lieutenant June Murphy at the police station prior to the stings. There were a number of stings done that day. The sting guidelines were reviewed with Mr. Paquette, and Mr. Paquette left behind his, as per the guidelines, he left behind his wallet, and, I'm sorry, his identification and his money. The stings began, Mr. Paquette went by himself into... The stings began, Mr. Paquette went by himself into Bay State and went to the merchandise, selected a bottle of vodka, brought it to the front counter. He, Mr. Rulo, Marcelo Rulo, who is the current owner of Bay State and has been the manager of Bay State since 2005, he bought the stock in 2010, was on duty. And he asked Mr. Paquette, "Do you have identification? What is your birth date?" Mr. Paquette answered with his birth date, which is August 23, 1991, which made him 20 years old at the time. And Mr. Rulo proceeded with the sale. That is the testimony at both the first Board hearing and the ABCC. There was some additional detail provided at the ABCC consisting of the fact that Mr. Paquette did pull out his wallet in the course of the transaction. He did pay for the merchandise, and he did have his wallet out. Mr. Rulo proceeded with the sale, and Mr. Paquette left and notified Lieutenant Murphy, who was just outside, that the sale had gone through. The two entered again together. Mr. Paquette identified the person who made the sale. Lieutenant Murphy obtained positive identification from him. It was a driver's license stating the name of Marcelo Rulo. And Mr. Rulo made a statement to the effect of that this, that there had been a prior, he'd been involved in a prior violation. So those are basically the facts underlying the violation. The ABCC, as the Board is aware, decided, and this is an advisory opinion, it's not binding on the Board under the case law and under the statutes, the ABCC issued an advisory opinion recommending that the Board find that the licensee was not responsible and not impose a sanction because it felt that the Board departed from the sting guidelines in two primary respects. The first is that Mr. Paquette did not immediately turn on his heels and leave the store when asked the question, "How old are you? What is your birth date?" Instead, he, Mr. Rulo proceeded with the transaction, and Mr. Paquette cooperated with the flow of events. The second allegation by the ABCC saying that the town departed from the sting guidelines was that Mr. Paquette, the ABC said, said, ABCC said, did not leave all his personal effects in the station. The sting guidelines say that, but they also refer to placing money and personal identification in a bag. And so the police department has interpreted the sting guidelines to mean you leave your money and your personal identification behind. They have not interpreted to mean that you leave your rings, you leave your necklaces, you leave your bobby pins, you leave every single item of personal effects on your body behind. So the ABCC arrived at the conclusion that the town departed from the sting guidelines, and it, its position is that any deviation at all, no matter how technical, from sting guidelines renders a sting invalid irrespective of whether the departure or the conduct of the licensing authority amounted to entrapment or was coercive or constituted inducement in any way. Any technical violation, any technical departure from sting guidelines means the sting is invalid according to the ABCC. And the police chief submits that this is not correct under the case law, that the cases, and it's all explained in the town's memorandum, the police chief's memorandum that the Board has in detail, the police chief has explained the legal reasoning for why the ABCC decision is wrong. But in essence, there is no case law that says that. The courts have always focused on entrapment, coercion, inducement. And there wasn't any here. Mr. Paquette answered truthfully what his age was, and Mr. Rulo went through with the sale. And this is notwithstanding the fact that Mr. Rulo has been the manager at Bay State since 2005. He's had tips training on safe service of alcohol, safe sales of alcohol, three times in that period. He has been the person responsible, this is his testimony at the ABCC, he's been the person responsible for the day-to-day operations of the business. The owner until 2010, when he bought the stock, was the estate of Enrico Longi, the executor, he understood to be the owner, she was the executor, but she lived in Italy. He was on premises in the country, on site. He testified that he was responsible for hiring, firing, supervising, disciplined. He reprimanded the sales clerk who had been responsible for the two prior violations, he testified. He was responsible for drafting Bay State's policy, a written policy that he signed, stating that he understood it, that required carding of all people who appeared to be 30 years old or younger. And notwithstanding that policy, and notwithstanding his testimony, that Mr. Paquette did indeed appear to be under 30 years old, he went through with the sale. And his reason that he testified to at the ABCC was that it was raining, and he didn't want to inconvenience the customer. So that's not, the police chief proposed it, that's not a strong basis for not following the law and the policy that he drafted. And for all of those reasons, the police chief submits that the Board should find the licensee responsible in this instance.
Thank you, Ms. Correa. Are there questions from members of the Board for Ms. Correa at this point?
Just, just a clarification. And I, I may have missed it, but Mr. Rulo, as I understand the record, asked for identification, and the young man did not leave immediately, but within one or two seconds, Mr. Rulo then asked, "Are you 21? What is your date of birth?" And received a truthful response to that and consummated the sale.
Yes, that's an accurate summary of the evidence, the testimony at the ABCC and before this for the first time.
Any other questions for Ms. Correa? Thank you. And Mr. Allen, would you like to make a statement?
Sure.
On your client's behalf?
Sure. I will go through any of the facts as they are stipulated. You know, I will just tell you that your town council argued that exact case, as you just heard up here, with a lot of force, with a lot of passion to the ABCC, the exact same fact pattern, and the results came back the way they came back. I think one thing that is extremely clear is that the SJC has said that a single violation, and arguably here, there's multiple violations, but a single violation is enough to throw off and create unfair, to quote them exactly, "A single violation of written or expressed guidelines undermines the fundamental fairness of a compliance check operation, and the check is not valid." That's what the ABCC has said. I guess my fundamental problem is, this town consistently has held the ABCC in high praise, and I sat through representing a number of restaurants through the licensing process when there were some changes made, and there was regularly conversations with the ABCC and say, "Well, I think do it this way because the ABCC felt this was the right way to go." The ABCC has opined that, in this particular case, that the guidelines were not met. I think it's clear they have the statutory authority to create the guidelines. I don't believe the town has the authority to exceed any of their guidelines, and they would have to follow, follow them. And here, when the ABCC comes back with something that is inconsistent with the town's finding, suddenly their opinion is not quite as valid as when it's kind of consistent with what the town desires. The other thing, I think, that the Board should consider as far as whether to adopt the ABCC's recommendation, which is essentially dismiss this matter, right? It's either dismiss it or go forward with what you did before, and I'll be in court, and we'll all go to SJC, and we'll deal with it then, and I'm extremely comfortable. But one thing we have to think about is, what is our goal here? Is our goal to deter and to punish, right? My client, as you see, this happened October 2011, the, we had a hearing, went before the ABCC, May 23, 2012. A decision came back, November 21, 2012. So you're aware, it was four months after that decision came down, till we heard something back from the town as to what the town was going to do. In this time period, my client, A, had this on his shoulders, B, was paying attorney fees throughout this process, and I would argue to you, has suffered as a result of this, has been punished by the Board in a greater way than a couple or three days can, shutting down his place would cause. So as far as deterring, it, you can check that off your list. My client has been deterred. Now, I do want to make clear that the issue of ownership never, we never got a ruling from the ABCC on that. It is something that we will continue to pursue at the Superior Court. It never became relevant at the ABCC because they felt that the guidelines were not met. Therefore, they recommended remanding with their ruling. So we never did get to that. But I understand the Board's position. I just take the position that he didn't have ownership. He wasn't the corporate owner of the property. He was the manager of record, but at some point, he was all in and became the owner of the property. So why this is being looked at as a third, just because he is employee and a manager, seems to be a little bit unfair to an employee of a manager. Now he owns the property. He's, he's gone all the way from employee to actually owning the property and running a pretty successful business there, and has passed stings subsequent to this particular time period. So the objectives of the Board, I would say, has been complied with. He has been deterred. He has been punished. He has learned. He has passed the stings. And I just suggest to you that there's really no need to continue dragging this on. It will, it will have to go to court. He really has no choice. I mean, 15 days closure is just too much for him. And as you know, we tried to work something out. It seems like we're too far apart to do that. So I'm hoping that the Board accepts the punishment that he's received to this point and accepts it as sufficient. I would argue that it would, that it is sufficient and dismisses this case, allow him go on. There'll still be more stings, and if he comes back, shame on him, because there'll be members of this Board that will continue to be here and see him. And at that particular time, you'll treat it as a third, or a fourth, or a first, or a second, and we'll have to deal with it then. So I just suggest that this matter should be dismissed. He's learned his lesson, and let's all just move on.
Questions to Mr. Allen from members of the Board? Any questions? Yes, Selectman Goldstein.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, is it your position that your client was in any way prejudiced or treated unfairly as a result of the underage operative having a wallet on his, on his, on his body?
Well, I would certainly argue that a wallet is different than a bobby pin. Having a bobby pin doesn't really consistent with pulling out an ID. Most time when people pull out an ID, they pull out their wallet first. Pulling out a wallet first, as if you're motioning for a ID, is something consistent with what I would do, with probably what most people would do when they're pulling out an ID. So that was the argument, and that's what the ABCC found.
So what was the effect on your client by seeing the operative take a wallet out?
Well, it would be consistent with a motion of somebody who had a valid ID.
Yeah.
Right? And then, then when he stated that he did not have it on him, he used a prop to show that he had an ID and then didn't have an ID on him. And when you put the two together, much like the ABCC, it's using a prop to go towards showing that he was of age and therefore a violation of the guidelines.
And similar question. In what specific way was your, or I should ask, does your client claim he was prejudiced or treated unfairly due to the operative failing to leave the premises immediately? And we'll go into immediately in just a second, but...
Yeah, and I think, I think we argued this the first time around and argued it by the Board, that just the mere fact of answering the question, I mean, the guidelines are clear. If you're asked a question, you leave. Because the goal is to get these people to make sure they ask ID. When he responded back, along with the wallet, you look at totality of the situation, he assumed that the person was of age. So he's prejudiced by the entire act.
So somebody who accepts a fake ID, they shouldn't be found to be in violation in the event of a sting, sting operation?
Well, if you accept a fake ID with somebody else's picture or somebody else's that, I mean, yeah, I think that's inconsistent with, I'm not sure that there's, that's an apple to orange. I'm not really following that.
So where would you draw the line on what an operative is allowed to bring with them and not allowed to bring with them?
You know, the best thing about that is I don't have to answer that question. I can only tell you that the ABCC sets the guidelines, and they felt it was, it was, they're the ones with the power to do it, not me. And they felt that it was beyond the scope.
Okay. Other questions? Selectman Binka?
Yeah, I, well, as I look at the ABCC, they basically said if there are personal effects, that somehow violates the guidelines. And didn't get into the sort of reasoning that you got into. And, I mean, it was clear that the young man did not have identification and did not provide identification. And I think it's also clear that he said his birth date truthfully, and that that birth date indicated that he was less than 21 years old. Is that correct?
I think it's the fruit of the poisonous tree.
All right.
Other questions, comments?
Can I have one more follow-up?
Okay, sure.
Is it your position that the guideline requires the underage operative to leave the establishment within a specific period of time after being asked for an ID?
I don't have a position on what it says. I think each, each situation is looked at, that's why they look at it de novo. And in this particular one, the answer was yes.
So the guideline, the exact wording of the guideline is, if asked for identification, the underage person should leave the establishment. It doesn't say how quickly, though, right?
Yeah, I guess you're right.
Okay. And do you interpret that, though, as requiring it to be within a specific period of time?
I'm interpreting that to mean that this individual should have turned and left on this particular occasion, and the ABCC agreed with me.
Did the, did the person eventually leave?
Yes.
Okay.
My question is, after having been told the person's age, the manager went ahead with a transaction with someone who had honestly identified himself as being underage. How do you explain that?
I understood. I understand that.
So the ABCC thinks it's okay for someone who is a minor to walk into an establishment and admit that he's underage to legally purchase alcoholic beverages, and the manager is allowed to sell that person a beverage in violation of the law? Is that what you're stipulating?
Well, no, I think...
I'm sorry, I'm not an attorney. I'm just a sort of one, two, three guy.
That's okay. I mean, the answer is, no, I don't think the ABCC interprets it that. I think the ABCC has certain guidelines to put in place. I think the ABCC focuses on the fairness to the license holder. And because, because the, you know, there's different boards in different towns with different objectives and different goals, and with one regulated standard that can be used, I think the ABCC is able to level the playing field and really make sure that license holders are treated fairly also. So in this particular circumstance, I don't think you're, the answer to your question is yes, they're allowed people to come in and do that. But they felt these guidelines, they went beyond the scope of what they were allowed to do by the guidelines. They exceeded their rights under the guidelines, and they felt that it never should have got to being served anything. He should have left, and we never would have got to this.
Under ABCC guidelines, but not under our guidelines. We operate under our guidelines, Brookline guidelines.
I understand that's your position.
And furthermore, this is a precedent which basically says, you can walk into any place that's licensed, admit that you're underage, and be sold an alcoholic beverage in violation of the law, and if that hap, if it happens that you didn't run out the door immediately upon asking to purchase this illegal, make this illegal transaction, it's somehow valid? I am horrified.
This isn't the first time the guidelines have been challenged. There's other case law in there. And it hasn't sort of opened this Pandora's box that you're worried about, that people just walking in, that stings are useless. It's just, hasn't worked out that way. I mean, in the history of this town, I can't think of many cases that end up in Superior Court over this. I can't think of many cases that get challenged by the, by the applicant as being, by the license holder as being outside the guidelines. I mean, we don't have a long history of... have a long history of it here. So, Madam Chair, I don't, I think you're overly concerned about something that hasn't historically been a problem and hasn't created a problem in other communities.
Well, that may be true, but I would argue that we are a community that has a great many college students who are underage, and perhaps we have a responsibility to be more vigilant.
And I agree with that, and I also think we have some very reputable business owners who not only invest in business, but invest in the real estate and pay taxes to the community, and they should be looked at too and treated fairly also. And I think the ABCC has done that in this particular case.
Other questions from members of the board?
One more, please.
Okay.
Mr. Allen, you said that you felt that the goal of the sting operations was deterrent and punishment. The ABCC actually opines on that in their discussion. They say the commission has repeatedly held that the policy behind a sting operation should be education of licensees. And so, I'm going to ask you the pointed question. How was your client educated by the two previous violations that he came before this board on?
You know, I can, you know, there was a period of time in between. You know, I think that what is clear, Ken, is that once you own a piece of a business, once you own the real estate, once you reach a certain age in your life, he was younger and the earlier violations, once you read a stage in your life and you realize that this is where you are, you realize that you can't be doing things like this. You can't appear before this board. You can't be paying attorneys to come and defend yourself. So, there's been a significant education in a short period of time, and this has been going on for two years for this young man. And I can assure you that not only is he educated, he understands this. He's been very, very involved in this. We've sat down a lot in it. He's been forthright. He's been truthful. He understands some of the stupidity that went on in that particular night that, you know, shouldn't be defended. But, he also feels that he's learned his lesson, and he has been educated, and he would hope that the board sees it that way and dismisses this case and allows him to move on with a very profitable business. He's invested a lot of money. He's cleaned up that storefront. He's taken away, he doesn't serve domestic beer anymore. He's not gearing his business towards a younger crowd. He's doing imported. You know, I remember that place, what that used to look like. You remember that place, what that used to look like. It was convenience with, you know, cheap domestic beer. It's a nice place now. He's invested about $50,000 recently in this place since he's owned it. And he's really becoming a good part of the community. And one of the things we thought about is should we bring a bunch of people here from the neighborhood to show what a great job? And I felt it was a little bit, you know, we're at a hearing stage. It's not really appropriate, but there are a lot of people that support his business and a lot of people that appreciate what he provides for that neighborhood.
Yes, Ms. Correa, do you have something you want?
I'd briefly respond to a few of the points that Attorney Allen-
Sure.
...raised. First of all, there hasn't been any proposal on the table for the board to consider yet as to whether this would be a first, second, or third violation. The chief will be up shortly to discuss that. Secondly, like Chairman DeWitt said, it's not the ABCC guidelines at issue here. It's the town's guidelines, and this board interprets the town's guidelines. The ABCC's guidelines are not binding on this board. And in the pre-hearing memorandum of the Town of Brookline's Police Department, a number of cases are cited on that where the AG's office followed its own guidelines, saying the operative will lie about the operative's age, and those cases were upheld. I am not aware of a single decision in which guidelines were challenged. There was a departure, and the SJC or any appeals court said the sting was invalid. There is no SJC case on this topic. There is one from the appeals court, Fran's Lunch, which simply the facts there were that the sting complied with the guidelines, and the court said fine. There is no case considering the question here, that is, where there is a so-called departure from guidelines, can the board still sanction the licensee where there's been no entrapment? And that is, those are the facts here. With regard to the wallet issue, while wallets can be shown to pull out identification, they also contain money. In this case, Mr. Paquette left his money at the station, was given a $20 bill by Lieutenant Murphy, and had to pay for the liquor in Bay State, and the wallet contained the money. I think those are the, with respect to whether he was required to leave immediately, as Chairman DeWitt pointed out, there are policy reasons that should not require an operative to turn on its heels immediately. And there is a case cited in the police chief's brief, BAA Massachusetts, where there were facts very similar to that, and a sting conducted by the ABCC itself, where the transaction was not terminated by the underage operative. The ABCC said the sting was fair, and the SJC said the sting was valid, and the violation was upheld. Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition of the matter before us? Seeing and hearing none. We now move to decide whether or not the licensee is responsible for the violation for which it is charged. All those in favor of a finding of responsibility with regard to the charge that on October 27, 2011, the licensee permitted an illegality on the licensed premises in violation of 204 CMR 2.04 perence two to wit, the sale or delivery of alcoholic beverages to a person under 21 years of age in violation of general law, Chapter 138, Section 34, and Sections A.22 and A.323 of the Town of Brookline's Sale of Alcoholic Beverage Regulations. All in favor, say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Binka?
Aye. And after the vote, I would like to make a comment.
Sure. Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Wischinski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now, we will continue with the determination of an appropriate remedy and penalty. Is there a recommendation from the police department?
Chairman DeWitt, there will be, I just was wondering if each board member could state the reasons for the vote and responsibility for the record. That will be helpful.
Sure. Well-
I'm happy to start, and that is actually the comment that I wanted to make. In this case, the individual had a wallet, but, and the argument is that he didn't place all of his belongings into a bag before he left. To my mind, that was a non-substantive violation of guidelines. It did not constitute entrapment. It didn't constitute coercion. It didn't constitute inducement, and it didn't violate fundamental fairness. What if he had sunglasses in his pocket? He, there is no indication that this in any way, from the record, there is no indication that this in any way was fundamentally unfair. The ABCC really, though, focused on the fact that when asked for identification, he did not immediately spin on his heels and go out the door. What did happen, according to the record, is that within one or two seconds after he indicated that he didn't have identification, his wallet didn't have identification in it, Mr. Rulo, again, within one or two seconds, asked him, are you 21? How old are you? After being told truthfully that this person was less than 21, Mr. Rulo consummated the transaction. And again, I don't see any entrapment or coercion, inducement, or violation of fundamental fairness. Reading the ABCC decision, if you accept that, it would provide a roadmap to businesses to violate our liquor laws, because it would mean that if somebody did not immediately spin on their heels, either the person would not be participating in a sting, or that if the person was, it would be a technical violation that would negate the sting. And I just cannot accept the logic of that conclusion. Further, there actually was no violation of ABCC guidelines in this case, as I read them. The ABCC guidelines say that at no time shall the underage person provide any identification, and in this case, no identification was provided. Then, and that provision uses the term "shall." Then, the next provision says, if asked for identification, the underage person should leave the establishment. It is not a mandatory language. It uses "shall." It is, I don't know, advisory, or precatory, or whatever the word would be, the legal word would be. But, it uses the word "should" as opposed to the word "shall." And I think putting that together, coupled with the fact that what you had here was a one- or two-second period before Mr. Rulo, the owner of the establishment, went back to initiating a process of consummating the sale and did, and did in fact consummate it when knowing that the person was under 21, I just simply cannot agree with the ABCC.
Okay. Selectmen Goldstein?
I focus on the language from the Fran's Lunch case, which is quoted by the ABCC, that absent entrapment or other abuses violative fundamental fairness, government involvement in criminal activity for purposes of investigating possible violations of law is permissible. And then here's the important part, even if technical violations of the law occur. If there were violations here, and I don't believe that there were, they were merely technical violations. And it's in two areas that Selectmen Binka has very coherently and strongly discussed. But, just to quickly reiterate, the requirement that the operative leave the premises upon being asked for an ID does not, the word "immediately" does not appear in there, and even if it did, one to two seconds might easily be interpreted as immediate. Before any kind of time passed, that's when the store owner asked what the operative's date of birth was. The operative, the store owner was the one who continued that conversation, not the operative continuing that conversation. The requirement that the operative have no possessions with them in the guidelines is clearly subject to a reasonableness review, a reasonable standard. I can't imagine that you would not be allowed to have eyeglasses, or clothing for that matter, or contact lenses in your eyes. I mean, these are all, these are all personal possessions, and clearly, the law is written in a way that is subject to a reasonableness interpretation, and having a wallet to take out money from is clearly something that a person should reasonably be able to have in this instance. So, for those reasons, I agree with Selectmen Binka's interpretation.
Selectmen Daly?
Yeah, well, I also think Selectmen Binka expressed it very well, but I, when you take out a wallet and you say, no, I don't have any identification, even though you're showing them a wallet, I fail to see how anyone could call that entrapment or trickery or anything. Secondly, I, he was correctly told the young man's birthday, and it's, when it's 20 years, it's not really difficult math even. So, I don't think there was anything unfair about this. I think it's clear that it was a violation. There seems to be a problem with learning the lesson here, because when the same individual who did the sale in this case was the manager, there were other violations in the past. So, there's, and I have to say, in reading the ABCC advisory opinion to us, I was struck by how they seem to be very concerned with the rights of the license holder and not concerned at all with the public good that we are trying to pursue here of not having underage drinking going on in town. So, I think if we, I think it's clear the violation occurred, and, you know, if we must continue challenging this, that's what we have to do.
Selectmen Wischinski?
I don't have a lot of substance to add, but I'll state for the record that, for me, I wasn't here for the original hearing, so for me, this was a de novo review of the case, and I did read the record as presented to us in all the exhibits. And in looking at it, I think I'm taking Attorney Allen's advice to look at the totality of the situation, and thinking in terms of was the licensee entrapped, treated unfairly. And I just don't buy that the wallet was a prop to simulate an ID, or was intended to mislead the licensee. And the licensee was told the proper birthday, and all it was, all it took was some simple math to figure out that he was underage. So, and I don't buy the poisonous fruit argument.
And I concur with my colleagues, but for me, the bottom line is the sale was made to an individual who had honestly revealed his age. So, the sale was made to an underage person. The manager did not need to make that sale. He could have just simply said no. And therefore, I, all these other arguments are appropriate, but bottom line for me is the sale was made. It was an illegal sale to a minor, and the person who made it knew it was an illegal sale to a minor. And I assume, therefore, that person would expect some sort of sanction. Okay. Moving forward, we now will continue with determination of an appropriate penalty, and my question is there a recommendation from the chief of police?
Yes, I do have a recommendation. I know there was some talk about whether we consider this a first offense or a third offense, and I know that he's owned it for his latest offense, and that's when he owned the business, so I could see if the board wanted to consider this a first offense. However, when we think about the nature of the discipline to be imposed, he did play a large role in the previous two violations. He was a manager of record on each one of those two occasions. So, I would recommend to the board that we stick to the original sanctions that we impose, which is a 15-day suspension, 10 days to be served, and five days to be held for a two-year period.
Do members of the board have any questions or comments about the chief's recommendation?
I don't support it.
Okay. Yeah, Selectmen Binka?
Any response?
We can't agree to it.
You can't agree to the penalty?
Right. If you want to hear a pitch on what I think could be appropriate, short of a dismissal, since the board doesn't seem to be going by way of dismissal, if it treated as a first offense and flipped those two, as to five days, if we could work out a period of time, maybe consecutive Mondays or something like that, and then if you want to hold some time in abeyance, we could probably work out that. But, short of that, I don't think-
Can it waive your appeal in that instance, are you suggesting?
Well, that's, that would be the, that would be the point of it, right? So, I'd have to talk to my client if you want me to give you thirty seconds.
All right, but can we just be clear about what your recommend, or what your proposal is? We've got before us a recommendation of a 15-day suspension with 10 days served and five days to be withheld, and you're proposing-
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days, 10 days withheld and five days served.
All right. Could I, Ms. Correa-
Just wondering if Ms. Correa wants to-
Yes, Ms. Correa had a comment, so-
And I'm, I'm just wondering if Ms. Correa, you and Attorney Allen want to talk for two or three minutes?
That would be helpful. I have presented a written proposal along the lines that Attorney Allen mentioned to him several hours ago.
Therefore, why don't you, why don't we take a brief intermission from the hearing, which we will continue? which we will continue, and we can move on to the next item on our agenda, and you might want to, you know, go out and have a consultation and come back. Okay. We are, now we have the opportunity to vote on the warrant articles that relate to the Coolidge Corner Theater Foundation. And it was my understanding that perhaps members wish to hold these three articles until we are more, until we have another draft of the memorandum of agreement. Is that correct? Is that the will, the sense of the committee? Okay.
Yeah, and just for the benefit of the public, these three warrant articles deal with property rights with regard to the Coolidge Corner Theater. And the town has an easement, the theater is requesting that that easement be extinguished, that the town grant an easement to the theater, and that the town lease air rights to the theater. And part of this whole package is the creation of a memorandum of agreement between the town and the theater. And that agreement is in the process of being negotiated by Town Council and Council for the theater. And we have not reached closure on that point yet, so.
We are drafting, and drafting, and drafting, I believe would be a fair way of putting it. Okay, we'll hold then Item 17, which would be a vote on warrant articles 19, 20, and 21, and therefore move on to the next item, which is the question of establishing an override study committee. Selectman Banka, I believe you have a draft charge to that committee?
I do.
Would you like to talk about it?
Do you want me to read it? Or it is quite long and detailed. Let me, let me just say-
Why don't you summarize it first, and we'll ask you some questions.
I think we all, we had it in our packets. I think we've had a chance to read it ourselves. Yeah, give us the highlights.
Thank you. I appreciate that. As most of the citizens of Brookline know, the school enrollment issue is something that has been at the top of everybody's list of concerns over the last several years. And there have been efforts and steps taken to address that. There has been the expansion of the Heath School, there's been the expansion and renovation of the Runkle School. There has been, in this upcoming town meeting, there are additional classrooms at Lawrence, as I recall. There is an ongoing process of conversion of space in the schools from non-classroom space to classroom space. But there is now meeting, at the present time, the B-Space Committee, on which a number of individuals who are really familiar with this issue are participating, including Selectman DeWitt and Selectman Goldstein.
And Selectman Wyszynski.
And Selectman Wyszynski.
Oh yeah, Selectman Wyszynski, not as a-
Former advisory committee member.
But as, that's right, as, wearing his advisory committee hat.
Former hat.
Yeah, so slightly cocked to the side now.
Right, right.
But the, there is, I think, a realistic expectation that the work of the B-Space Committee will lead toward consideration of an override, that the issues that have been brought up are not something that can be addressed within the existing budget and the expected growth in the existing budget without an override. At the same time, it is important that the citizens of this town have confidence that any override is one that is necessary and appropriate for the needs of the town and the schools. And we have, when we've had overrides in the past, we've considered them with override study committees. And I am, and I think we are, as a board, we're the only town body with the authority to call for an override on the ballot. And the board has in the past established an override study committee when the issue has come up. And I am proposing that we do that, I would move that we do that, that we get going on that issue. There are, I think, issues that can be studied, and I don't know how long it'll take to form this committee, but we can, I think, begin the process even before the B-Space Committee completes its work, evaluating the long-range demographic projections, including particularly the school populations, looking at long-range financial projections, and the factors that are driving cost projections and revenue projections for the town and for the schools. One thing that I think is going to be important is to look at best practices and efficiencies in school and town operations, and programming, and staffing, and the use of capital facilities. And this is something that we have done on the town side. One of my first actions when I was elected as Selectman four years ago, five years ago now, was to chair an efficiency initiative committee, which made a number of recommendations for savings in, on the town side. There, I think it is appropriate, given the magnitude of the numbers that we're looking at, for a similar process to be done on the school side with the assistance of a consultant, if necessary, and I suspect that one will be necessary and appropriate, so that the citizens of the town have confidence that any recommendations for increased expenditures or an override are truly necessary. We would look at the impacts of various programs, and this would, I think, be a, hopefully, a dispassionate and quantitative look at the issues that the town and the schools are Town bonding capacity, taxpayer capacity for increased burdens, the cost of various programs, including non-mandated programs, and ultimately to make recommendations as to whether an override or a debt exclusion is necessary, and if so, at what level and for what purposes. And I am suggesting that, given the complexity and breadth of the issue, that the, that this study be divided into two portions. One, making recommendations, hopefully by March 1st of 2014, to the extent that there are, that there would be an override or debt exclusion necessary to meet fiscal year 15 budget needs, and then an August 15th date for recommendations to meet longer-term needs. I really invite individuals who have an interest in working with numbers and quantitative issues, and looking at financial questions, and demographic questions, and capacity questions, and so forth, to submit their names to the Selectman's office. Because I think that this, given the simple magnitude of some of the numbers that have been mentioned, that this will be an extraordinarily important process for the town. And I think the town will need all the help it can get.
Okay. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I have had one thing that I, you sort of allude to on here, but don't, and perhaps the B-Space Committee is working on this, or maybe even the Brookline Community Foundation with their upcoming talk about, yes, demographics and things. But I have still been, you know, I know that the trend, where the trend is going, but I've still been a little perplexed as to why the trend has changed so much in recent years. And I have heard anecdotally that families are having three or four kids instead of the two kids many of us had, and that, and I know I see in my own neighborhood, and I hear in other neighborhoods, we're in sort of a time of turnover, where some of us's kids are grown, are moving out, and younger families are moving in. But I, and there's, I think, some other reasons, you know, maybe our school system has not had to make the kind of cuts some other school systems might have had, making us look more attractive. But I still don't feel that I have any definitive answers as to why this change has taken place, why there are so many more kids now, and why that, you know, the ratio between our live birth data and the numbers going into our kindergarten class is about 100% or slightly over 100%, whereas it used to be about an 80% correlation. So is anybody going to answer that question for me?
That's-
Either, either committee.
No, that is, that is a very good question. I, the B-Space Committee members-
I think the B-Space Committee has observed the trend. I don't think the B-Space Committee understands the why as much.
I think we have done our best to get data, and there are several demographic studies that were done starting in 2009 and updated in 2012. There is a, some, actually, some information that's in the Understanding Brookline analysis, which talks about additional housing units, not over the last decade, but over the last 25 years, that may have some sort of impact. There's generational turnover, which is a factor, but there are many different factors. We also understand that young families find it a very attractive community to move into. And there is a lot of evidence that people are living here, families are living here underhoused relative to their, let's say, expectations and income in another community. In other words, they, they might be living in a smaller housing unit in Brookline compared to what they could afford in a more suburban community in order to be in Brookline. And one of the reasons they want to be here is our schools, and probably the other one is excellent public transportation, so. But I don't know what we real, how we could actually tell you.
Yeah, and I've heard all that too. I haven't seen the actual, I've heard all those anecdotes, and just my own personal observation, you know, that, what I observe kind of corresponds with that.
Yeah.
But I just, I haven't seen-
I guess, I mean, obviously, the reason I'm posing the question is, you know, so that we have some sense that, yes, this is a long-term trend, and major capital investment is necessary and worthwhile or not. And so maybe I would urge you to think about getting a statistics-type person on your committee.
That certainly should be part of the assignment. I will simply observe that what we do know is that from the 60s up until the enrollment increases began around six years ago, we were very consistent. And since then, we are equally consistent with a much higher number of children, so. And we don't-
I mean, because I've wondered if one of the factors is, it has in the last few years been very hard, particularly for first-time homebuyers, to get financing. So that maybe people are staying in the apartment on Beacon Street here, and when financing is easier to come by, you know, they'd be moving out to Newton or Westwood or someplace and having the big yard. I mean, you just, you know, you have to ask those questions, I think, and if you're, if voters are being asked to vote for substantial increases in their taxes, you know, you do wonder about those things.
And you're absolutely right. I, you know, on the one hand, you don't want to underbuild, but on the other hand, you don't want to overbuild and have invested tens or hundreds of millions of dollars in a space that becomes unnecessary. And you ideally, you know, coupled with the issues that you've raised, you want to see whether there's some way to build some flexibility in. So, you know, these are, these are all terribly important issues that we're facing. I don't know whether we'll be able to answer all of them, but I do understand the, I do understand your comment.
Well, I will, I will ask again when you're further along on the project.
And I will say that, you know, I am aware of comments that one or two years are not a trend. And we've, we've seen some, I think the-
We're at six and counting.
Yeah, but the kindergarten class this year, the first grade class, was 666, and they're expecting, I think, 600 next year.
But that's compared to 450.
I know, I know, but-
Yeah, so, yeah, there is a little bit of a-
I mean, the expectation for next year is not that, that the numbers will continue to rise from this year. But that being said, you know, one question that I have had, and I haven't seen the data yet from the schools, is where were we last year at various points in time in terms of individuals signing up for kindergarten? Where are we this year? Where have we been historically in the past?
I think you'll find they have all that data. That is readily available.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been provided it yet.
Yeah, that data is available. You know, we know the live births for the next five years, you know.
Right.
Obviously, we can't, for the next five years, entering class.
And we do know that those live births do not actually represent the kindergarteners who arrive here.
The actual bodies.
But statistically-
Right.
They have been tracking very, very closely.
Where they used to track at lesser than 100%.
Right, they were at 85%.
Used to be, used to be around 80, yeah, it's been in the 80s and now it's, yeah, right.
Well, 100% was this past year, the 660 number.
660.
The past, the years before that, they were in the 90s.
Right.
It was still, still higher than the historical trend. But the other frightening statistic, not frightening, startling, startling is a better word, is if, if you look at the enrollment figures going back to the 1960s, the enrollment figures today are higher than even in the 1960s, which is, that, that was very startling to me.
So, there's a lot of information to be gathered, and I think we can, more or less as B-Space folks, let you know that there is a fair amount of data available that will help the process. I have a question, and it really has to do a little bit with your expectation that the type of approach the Efficiency Committee used for the town departments would be equally applicable to school departments, where we do have control over operating budgets in the town, but we do not have line item control over the school department. And they pretty much are autonomous, except for their bottom line.
I understand that, but I think that it's a fair question of asking, are there potential savings to be realized? We, when the Efficiency Initiative Committee was meeting, we made a number of recommendations for the school side. Some of them have been adopted, some of them have not been adopted, at least one that I can think of has not been adopted. And, you know, that- been adopted, and, you know, that, the, the, if there are potential savings that can be realized, and potential efficiencies that can be realized, I think that is something that should be considered by the school committee, and also ultimately considered by the voters.
But I will, I will say, I think it is wise to get going on this, you know, obviously, the need gets more pressing, we've been using closets for classroom space and things for the last few years, and as more of these big classes come along, obviously, the ability to shuffle is less and less, so.
Yeah, let me just say, I'm really not looking forward to this process particularly, I think it is going to be a very difficult one, and I, again, I really, to the extent that there are individuals who feel that they can contribute something to this process, please get your names and resumes-
Come forward.
Absolutely, to the, to the Selectman's Office.
Selectman Wyszynski.
And I think we've had, over the last, what, 20 years, we've had three overrides, and each one, we've gone through this process, and I think this process is essential to get a group of very smart people in to help us out, and I also think that this is so important, and the, the financial and strategic implications for the town are so important that if we need to spend a little money to help us gather the, the facts and the statistics, and help us analyze it, I think it would be a good investment.
Okay, well, I think we should have a vote, so I move that we establish an override study committee, to be conducted with the charge that was presented to us by Selectman Benka.
And to be chaired by-
And to be chaired by Selectman Benka, who will therefore need a bulletproof vest, along with others, all in favor, please say aye, Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Would you like us to reconvene our public hearing, or do you need a little more time?
No, we are ready.
Okay, well, if you would come forward, we will dispose of that matter.
So, in connection with the Bay State rehearing, we have a proposed, a proposal for the board that consists of five days served on specific dates, consisting of July 22nd and 29th, and August 5th, 12th, and 19th, 2013, and that 10 days would be withheld for a period of one year, pending no further violations, all rights of appeal and administrative review would be waived, and other provisions that are contained in a proposal that, if agreed to by the board, we would have marked as Exhibit Aye.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Correa?
So, these are all Mondays, is that what I'm seeing here?
Yes, those are Mondays.
Would you mind, just, just for my notes, so that I can read it out properly, read off the dates for me, just the Monday dates?
Yes, and I think Attorney Allen also wanted to comment.
Oh, sure.
The dates were July 22nd and 29th, and August 5th, 12th, and 19th, 2013.
Well, that is the slow time in town, right.
Okay, Selectman Allen, certainly.
Not necessarily in the liquor businesses, the summertime is slow time, but it's amazing the decisions people will make to get me out of their life, so, my client did make a business decision, we certainly appreciate it, the only, what I had suggested is, he, we had talked about those days, if there's five consecutive days, perhaps you could leave it up to the Town Council, or the Town Administrator, if we're able to come up with five consecutive days, if he chooses, tonight, he suggested five consecutive, but perhaps he'll close for a week and take a vacation, or something like that, if there's five consecutive days, and he'll close his store, but tonight, we, we wanted some kind of date, they want a date certain, but perhaps we could have the latitude of saying, unless five days are agreed to, between the licensee and Town Council, or Town Administrator, or the chairperson, however, the board wants to handle it.
Okay, so that, it would require the agreement of Town Council's office, or the, the chief of police, it wouldn't, it would, it would not be in the sole discretion of the licensee?
No, no, we've bounced it off, and I assume, I, the chief didn't have a problem if it ends up being five, five days consecutive, so, however the board wants to handle it, as to who we bounce it off of.
Okay, and everybody agrees to this, and chief and?
I'm accepting.
No, that's, I mean, council, council is speaking for him, yeah, okay.
I'm accepting of the proposal.
I, I'm fine with it, too.
Yeah, I, I think we will agree that this is acceptable, and certainly that we can be flexible about the actual dates on which the five days are served.
I do hope that your client has, has actually learned from this, and we will not be seeing him again.
I, what I said earlier was no hyperbole for the board, you know, he has, he has learned a lesson from this, an expensive lesson, and doesn't want it to continue, so, I hope the board also appreciates him stepping up here and, and working out something, and that's not an easy thing for him to do, because you go to the ABCC, you get a hearing from the ABCC that's positive, and, you know, you want to continue that momentum, but he made a business decision that thinks in everybody's best interest, and he wants to move on with the town to, he plans on staying here and continuing to be a good civic citizen.
I think we would all look forward to that.
Great.
So, this, are, are we going to read the same, I know, Ms. Correa, you made clear that the 10 days that are suspended or withheld now would be served in the event, do we have a vote along that line?
Yeah, we do, I'm going to read it out.
Yes, it's set out in Exhibit, Exhibit Aye, so that's, that will be signed by Mr. Rulo.
And it's still treated as a first offense, as we said.
My, my one question about any vote we will, or the vote we'll take now, is to incorporate the existence of Exhibit Aye.
Yes, that would be helpful.
I'm, I'm sorry, you say it was, it is treated as a first offense?
Yes, the agreement says, as consistent with the chief's recommendation and the discussions during the rehearing, this will be treated as a first offense, a serious first offense with the sanction that was discussed, but it would be treated as a first offense.
And there's agreement on that?
That was the chief's recommendation.
Okay. Okay, I, let me, I would just want to make clear that, in my mind, while that may have been the agreement between you, I do not consider that to be of precedential effect in any other case.
And the agreement does say that, that this will not be precedent.
Ms. Correa, if I simply say, according to Exhibit Aye, I will then incorporate the agreement language, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Selectman Daley.
What did, what did you mean by your last statement?
This, I understand that there is an agreement between Mr. Rulo and the town, or Town Council and, and the chief, that this is treated as a first offense, in, and, and maybe I should, in his case, and-
You mean for another case, it no presidential, if he were unfortunate, it would be a second offense, not-
No, I think he means for a completely different establishment.
Understood, I'm sorry, I just-
Yeah, and, and I should have, I should have made that more clear, and, and thank you for clarifying it.
All right, I'm going to shorten this vote a little bit, but I think we'll get it properly, I move that the liquor license of Bay State food shops shall be suspended for a period of 15 days, with five days imposed and served on the following dates, July 22nd, July 29th, August 5th, August 12th, and August 19th, subject to a negotiation with the representative of the town, those dates could be changed, and 10 days of said suspension shall be withheld on the following terms and conditions, which are according to Exhibit Aye, and these shall be imposed according to, oh, wait a minute, if this board finds any licensee in violation of any provision of the Mass General Laws, Chapter 138, Regulations, the ABCC, or the Town's Sale of Alcoholic Beverages Regulations, within one year, on or after May 14th, 2013, through May 14th, 2014, the said 10 days of suspension shall be imposed by the board, and served by the licensee without further hearing on such dates as this board may designate, and I think that's sufficient for this vote.
Do you want to just say, when you said with negotiation with the town, do you want to say Town Council?
Yeah.
So, it's clear who they have, they don't have to talk to the whole town.
Right, sorry, with, I said, I thought I said a representative of the town, but with Town Council is the representative of the town, Kate, are you following all this?
Given that Exhibit Aye has not been signed yet, I mean, do we, do we have to make an alternate provision?
I'm at a loss, Town Council?
Yes, there could be a motion that, in the event that Exhibit Aye is not-
Executed?
Executed.
Right.
By Bay State.
Then we should go to our original.
Then we will impose the sanctions as originally recommended?
Well, you just sign it.
I, I would recommend signing it.
If you'd sign it right now, then we don't have to worry about that.
A new-
I'm glad to sign it.
Okay, let's get signatures, that will certainly make this cleaner, clearer.
Should we, should we go ahead and take the vote, since it's?
Yeah, well, all right, fine, so, then, the language that I have suggested, we would refer to Exhibit Aye as signed, or signed Exhibit Aye?
Executed is the word we use in business.
Executed, executed, right.
With the change suggested by Selectman Daley, that it be, that an ultimate, an alternate schedule of dates is subject to approval of Town Council.
Approval of Town Council, yes, all right, and Kate, we're, we're going to have a chance to read this before we approve these minutes, I think, right, yes, okay, all in favor, please say aye, Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the-
And good luck to Mr. Rulo, and I hope we never see you again. Finally, we have one more item, which was just kind of to get everybody sort of up to speed, I know Selectman Daley is having the organizational meeting for the Committee on Diversity, Equal Opportunity, and Affirmative Action tomorrow, I believe, is that right?
Right, yes, very excited to be kicking this off.
So, give us an update.
And you, you have seen the charge, and I think it was in your packets again, but I'll just give you some of the, you know, sort of my interpretations of some of the specifics, and not, not necessarily in this order, I'm still working out what our agenda's going to be going forward, but we will be looking at the state model, specifically Executive Order 526, and other municipality models for human relations and/or human rights, commissions to develop an optimal model for our commission, including a review of the subject matter of warrant, Article 10, determine which models for interaction among the Boards of Selectman, Human Resources Board, and the Human Relations Commission, and what reporting structures are appropriate here, and review of warrant article, the subject matter of warrant, Article 9, look at current law in the affirmative action and equal employment areas to give guidance to the Board of Selectmen as to appropriate policies, also review, review the law on employee privacy rights, civil service, and collective bargaining, and their impact on where responsibility should lie for various areas connected to hiring, promotions, et cetera, review our statistics on diversity in the workforce, and town policies on equal employment and affirmative action, and the steps we've taken, such as entering the Commonwealth Compact to broaden the applicant pool, and investigating what further steps the town could take, for instance, the, the proponents of Article 10 have mentioned the Rooney Rule, which we actually, I think, have been following in practice on some of the search committees that I've sat on, but perhaps we might want to memorialize that, then, review the town's policy against discrimination and our training policies, review the Human Relations Commission's role in fair housing, and what a more current role it could or should be, and then, finally, writing a report to advise the town and others in these areas with suggestions as to the future shape of the Human Relations Commission, but I am actually going to, I have, very pleased to have a really knowledgeable group of people on this committee, and so I'm going to ask them, you know, there, there may be topics that I am not thinking of, that some of them will think of, so that, as I say, this is, I didn't, I didn't, haven't necessarily worked out the order yet, and haven't, you know, finalized this in any way, so, that will be one of the things to discuss with the others on the, on the committee.
Questions for Selectman Daley?
You've got a full docket as well.
Right, no, I would say, given the Diversity Committee, the B-Space Committee, the Override Study Committee, we're going to be fully occupied, right, something else?
Devotion.
Oh, and devotion School Committee, right, 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 we're going to be pretty fully occupied over the next several months, so, all right, if they're earning our large salaries. Right, if there are no other items or comments from members of the board, we will conclude the Board, Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, May 14th.
Speaking of our large salaries-
What, you want to raise?
Have we made her dog statue for-
She got the other one.
Right, I don't think, but we were going to make it into a little, a little statue for her, I figured-
Did she ever get it?
Oh, I didn't even do that, you know, and she started working on it, and I don't know what happened, so.
If you give it to me, I'll take, I'll take care of it, I'll bring it over to Arrow Sports, and all that, and something, okay?
That would be super, please do.
But I figure, we say-
Big, big bucks.